Hello, everyone. It is 6:30, and I'd like to call this December 13th meeting of the Willet City Council to order. We will start with a pledge to the flag. Mr. Hascheck, can you lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And may we have a roll call, please, Michelle.
Councilmember Rodriguez, present.
Stransky?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
Present.
Mayor Connie?
Yes. And Councilwoman Strong is absent, with an excused absence. We will move on to public communications. The city council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone has an opportunity to address the council, to expedite matters, and avoid repetition. Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, it may request the group appoint a spokesperson. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, its commissions, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. The council can take no action on unagendized items. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak to an item not on the agenda?
Okay. Come to the podium, if you would, and state your name.
My name is Donna Cash Vargas, and I'm coming to speak to you guys because I walk at night quite a bit. I wear reflective gear, and my dogs, I walk with dogs as well, and they wear light-up collars. Our town is extremely dark. I don't know, there's, on my street, we have one street light. We used to have at least three whenever I was growing up on that street. We purchased my parents' home, but anyways. So, every night that I walk, I just, people don't stop for you at the crosswalks, for one thing, so that's a danger. I always am watching for everybody else because they'll cut you off. But anyways, I'm just asking for more streetlights, please, and that for our safety. Please, thank you.
Could you let us know which street you live on, too?
I live on Barbara Lane.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And I have called PG&E also. Whenever they did the, they replace the, did the roadwork, they never put the street lights back up, so they never put the lights back on. Actually, they didn't even turn on the lights. Dolores told me I had to call and ask for the light to be turned on, so I did do that. And the lady was quite friendly and nice, but there's only one, so.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Is there anyone else tonight who would like to speak to an item not on the agenda? Did we receive any email correspondence, Michelle?
I don't know.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to public matters. The first item tonight is the 2024 City Council Assembly and Reorganization. This is my last night as mayor, my last moments, so we'll start out with the nomination of our next mayor. Jerry.
I would like to nominate Councilwoman Rodriguez as a mayor.
I also would like to say, so quickly, I just want to take a moment to say thank you. You've done a great job as mayor, and it's been a good year for this council, and done a good job in leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And thank you, Jerry.
I'll be happy to second that nomination. So, I guess we'll take a vote here. Suprema, what say you?
Oh, no, I have to vote first.
Yes. Mr. Stransky?
Yes. Yes.
And I say yes. So, congratulations, Madam Mayor, and I'm happy to turn this over to you, and you can continue with the rest of it.
All right. Moving on to the next part of business is the, I forgot, we have to use these now. I do apologize. There we go. We are going to entertain a motion for the nomination and appointment of the vice mayor.
I nominate Mr. Gonzalez. I accept.
All right, I'll second the motion. And any comments, questions? Anybody from the public? All right, call for the vote on that.
Yes.
Yes.
Stransky?
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Connie?
Yes.
We're out of order. Good job.
Yes. Yes. All right.
All right. Motion carries, and we're going to do the table shuffle real quick.
And Suprema, don't forget, your mic is always on, so you don't have to fuss with this one. Yes.
Thanks for surrounding us all today. I'm here, back to where I started.
You're next to Larry. All right. We mismatched this evening, and we look forward to seeing her at the next meeting. All right, the next order of business is committee appointments, and we won't have those committee appointments until the next meeting, but are there any public requests to change appointments? Otherwise, we can submit them. Do you have any desire to change anything? All right. Is there any?
I would just, oh, thank you. I think for continuity purposes, I think it'd be important for, if you would be willing to continue on the finance and the Measure K, I think that would be the only thing I would add, as opposed to, I'd like to stay on the committees I have, but I'll just kind of throw that out. But I'm just thinking for continuity.
So, LAFCO and?
Legis Cities.
Legis Cities.
And I think we're still on wastewater, so.
So, I guess I would just double-check. I would like to continue serving on finance and Measure K, but I know that the city council procedures typically designates a mayor and vice mayor on the finance committee. Is it okay to have a non-vice mayor serve on the finance committee?
I was not aware.
I don't think there's a.
No, I probably indicated that. Or is that just, has that just been our standard?
Maybe that's just been.
I think that's kind of been tradition.
Okay. Just tradition.
Okay. Well, then I would be happy to continue on those committees.
No changes over here?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll check in with Match and see if she's, she feels comfortable with the committees and boards that she's been appointed to. I know I'm very happy with the ones we're on, and we know that staying on the same boards and committees helps business run as usual, some formality and history, so that's important. Does anybody from the public want to comment on committees? All right. Having heard none, I'll move on to the next order of business, which is, let's see.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
The following, following items will be not discussed tonight.
Okay.
So, Item 3B, Item 3E, and then Item 3F. I see Supervisor Hascheck is in the audience tonight. Do you want to give it?
No, I was told I wasn't on it, so I'm fine not giving one.
Okay. So, there's that item as well, which would be 3D.
So, we'll pull B, E, and F, because I do believe Councilmember Stransky does have a question for Third District Supervisor, so I do want to give him an opportunity, and in case anybody from the public just has a quick question for you, if you don't mind.
No, no problem.
Okay.
I gave him the paper.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the Item 3C, which is the Little Lake Fire Protection District. There's an update in the packet, and then are we going to receive anything further?
No, you have a written report that's in the packet.
All right. And then Supervisor Hascheck, do you, do you need to say anything more, or just passed on the document, Larry?
Yes, I passed it to, it's about people that are on fixed incomes, how they can work for the county at a minimum wage and come up with time or money on their taxes at the end of, end of the time. And it's in the bulletin from.
ERP?
Yeah.
All right.
It's, it's, it's an interesting concept, and I gave it to Mr. Hascheck, and hope that maybe he'll go with it, run with it in the county.
Okay. Any questions for Supervisor Hascheck from the public? Okay. Thank you for being here at our meetings, we appreciate that. We'll move on to, looks like nothing more under public matters, correct?
Correct.
Okay. We'll move on to enactment of ordinances. 4A is a second reading and adoption of an ordinance, adding Chapter 17.59 Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance to Title 17, zoning of the City of Willets Municipal Code, and our presenting staff member will be Philip Davidson, our co-compliance officer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Philip Davidson, I'm your co-compliance officer, and I'm before you tonight with the second reading and adoption of the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance. That's my speech.
Wow, that's short.
It's, so the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance was put into place by the Department of Water Resources, and it's been mandatory that each city or local government adopts it. Previously, it's built into our green building code, and so we've managed it that way, but we'd like to make it an ordinance. Oh, sorry. Oh, I changed everything.
And we did discuss this matter?
Yes.
Before. Are there any questions that have come to mind since the last presentation?
And I just wanted to reaffirm that when we discussed this last, you indicated this is actually a law that's in effect, and we've just been kind of skirting it by incorporating it in another form. Is that correct?
Yes, it's also built into our green, the California Green Building Code, and so we have to enforce it to the building code, no matter what.
So, for the public, it's not something new, it's just now it's codified, is that?
Yes. True.
All right, are there any members of the public that would like to ask any questions? Okay, having heard none. Looks like before us is the adoption of the ordinance, so would anybody like a major motion to adopt this ordinance?
I would like to move that we waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of, City of Willets, California, adding Chapter 17.59, Title 17, zoning Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance.
Thank you. All right. And I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries for zero, and we will move on to the consent calendar. We have one item before us, the November 8, 2023 minutes.
I shall move.
All right.
I'll second.
Recognize, we have a first and a second. Anybody from the public? All right, hearing none, I'll call for the vote on that matter. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Under monthly activities report, the first item is the Business License Activity Report, which is in your packet for November 2023, and as well as the Building Permit Activity Report for November 2023. There is no commissions, agencies, business before us, so we'll move on to the City Manager Reports and Recommendations, beginning with the Request by Solid Waste of Willets to Terminate the Existing Franchise Agreement to Collect, Hall, and Dispose of Residential and Commercial Solid Waste from City Customers as the Termination Involves the Transfer of Services to Redwood Waste Solutions Incorporated.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Kind of a sad, but, you know, opportunity here, but I think we're also embarking on a new adventure. Unfortunately, Mr. Jerry Ward is going to be, he's releasing his interest in his business of solid waste. He has provided extremely fine, exceptional service to this community for waste management and providing assistance to various businesses and the residents and this organization. So, I just want to begin with acknowledging that, your service and your dedication to this community was forthright. Mr. McCracken, you have a lot to live up to as you transfer into this new position with your organization. So, we're looking at two things here. There are two tiered items before the council. So, the first item, 8A, is basically a request to terminate the existing franchise agreement that the city has awarded to Solid Waste, and this would open up the door or accommodate the item that's listed as 8B to enter into a new franchise agreement with Redwood Waste Solutions. The terms of the franchise agreement, the services, and the expectations that the council expects to be delivered to account holders within the city will remain the same. The significant deviation is the terms, the date of terms, and there's some detail on that, and both the gentlemen here can convey that to the council, as well as Mr. Lance, because he helped facilitate the various documents that are before you. So, the item that we're looking at right now would be 8A. Is there any specific questions related to the intent or the purpose of a termination agreement?
Go ahead.
Kind of a question operationally. I know as you depart and the new organization takes over, two questions. One is the recycling, all of that that's happening now here in town will continue, is that correct?
Correct.
And the, how about jobs? Most of the people that are employed here in town, will they still, if they want a job, will they have a job with the new organization?
I'll answer. Again, for the record, Jerry Ward, Solid Waste of Willets, thank you for those kind words, Brian, I appreciate that. It's been a long journey for us, and this is my last city council meeting, I've been coming since 1975, so it's a long, long term. But the answer to the question, yeah, all of our employees are being employed by Redwood Waste Solutions, and except for a couple people in the office, but they're, they're well aware of it. And, but all the drivers will be the same, all the side attendants will be the same, so. And then I think your first question is all the services will be the same.
Okay.
We will, they've allowed, they will allow the weekly pickup of green waste during November, but I wanted to say that the reason we are terminating the agreement and rewriting a new one, because normally you do a restate and an amended contract, but with the new contract that hopefully 8B or whatever you're going to hail next time, will include a lot of the information you need to move forward with the AB 1383 and all the green waste programs that are not in the current contract. So, rather than amend the contract with all that stuff, we just decided to move forward with a new contract. It's the very same contract that we use for the North County franchise outside the City of Willets, that is the new improved, the contract. So, the contracts for the county will be going before the Board of Supervisors on December 19, and that'll end the, the five franchise agreements that we currently hold with Brook Trails, the city, as well as the county. Last month, the Brook Trails District also approved the contract amendment, so they're, that's already in place. So, with your vote tonight, we'll, we'll be almost there.
Thank you, and again, I want to publicly recognize you, your company, for all the good deeds you've done. Whenever the city had a cleanup day, we were able to get some dumpsters out there. And the other thing I want to comment on is, I grew up going to the old dump in the old days where things were on fire, and it was even before the city took over a dump,
the dump. I think I, I'm trying to think of the one I went out on, and the new city dump, I thought,
okay, it's just the way things are, and to look at a transfer station, and no matter what people might say, it doesn't stink like you'd think it would. And so, I, I thank you for keeping our community in mind, and I hope to continue that relationship with the new organization.
Good, thank you. Yeah, there's a lot of changes that have happened over the last 50 years, and we're proud of being the progressive city we are, being the first to start curbside recycling in this, in this county, as well as with the baskets and then the carts, buyback recycling centers, so Willet should be very proud, but we're only as good as the employees that we hire to go out there and pick it up, so. But thank you for the comments.
Jerry, I just wanted to say, you mentioned your employees. I would like to commend you as an employer. I'm a tiny business owner, and I look at your organization, and I see how you've treated your employees over the decades, the salaries that you've offered, the benefits, and I think you're a true example of a fantastic employer here in our community.
Thank you.
And I just really want to thank you for all of your done.
Yeah, the $5 million payroll we have is all here in Willet, so that's, that's a big shot in the arm for the community here. Thank you for the comments.
Yeah.
I would like to thank Jerry also, and he's been with, when my wife was on council and when I'm on council, and so we're all, thank you very much for what you did.
Sounds like you've got lots of support from the city of Willets, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
I will. I will so move that we terminate the existing franchise agreement with solid waste.
I second it.
All right, thank you. Anybody from the public? All right, I'll bring it back up here and call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries for zero, and we're going to move on to the Request by Solid Waste of Willets to Grant the Existing Franchise Agreement with the City of Willets to Redwood Waste Solutions with a new expiration date of December 31, 2032, and with an option for a 10-year extension.
So, yes, I don't think there's much more to add. There's one, Mr. Ward did note that they would agree to the continuation of the extra pickups of the green bins or the yard waste on November, throughout the month of November. One other late amendment to the agreement relates to the holidays that are specified within the agreement. Currently, solid waste employees only receive dedicated two days, two days off, which is Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Christmas and New Year's.
Christmas and New Year's, excuse me. Redwood Waste, their organization, has a greater suite of holidays, and they want that noted and added into the agreement as it reads now. The one item on that is that the days that are missed on the pickup would be collected immediately after that one designated holiday.
And that seems fair and reasonable to me. All right.
So, question, like right now, our, for the sake of argument, on my, on my street, tonight I put my garbage out for pickup on Thursday, and then Friday would be, on the other days of the week would be recycle, or would be green waste on the other week. On those days where they coincide, would one stay the same and just one would slide over, and that would work that way?
Would you like me to answer from the podium?
Yes, please.
The public are going to be curious about how these, and I know you'll probably publish something out, but.
Good evening, Bruce McCracken, Redwood Waste Solutions. I've known Jerry for a very long time, I've only been in the business for 39 years, so I'm not quite there yet, but yes, it will just slide. So, if your Wednesday pickup normally, it slides to Thursday, if you're Friday, it slides to, if you're Friday, it slides to Saturday. It aligns, it disaligns it with our Ukiah operation and our county operations.
Thank you, sir.
And then, if you don't mind, one more question. I know that there was some discussion at the last meeting about the yard waste bins and the blue bins not always having the proper material in them. Will you be doing some additional education? I know that there are some differences. Solid Waste has been generous in terms of households and potentially businesses not always putting the proper items in the bins, and I'm just wondering how, as you roll out your service, what educational pieces you might put in there, because I know that there, that you're a little stricter, and so just wondering how that might play out.
Well, stricter means, I guess, after we educate and educate, Michelle Goodman's here tonight, and that's her job, is to educate our customers, and we do give a lot of leeway, but if someone's going to be, you know, putting garbage in their blue can time after time after time after time, there's a consequence to be, to be paid, because there's human hands that touch that, right?
Yes.
So, I, you know, we're, you know, we're like Jerry, lenient, you know, we're, we work in small communities in Lake County and Mendocino County, we understand it, so, you know, we're not a big hammer. All decisions are made in Ukiah, and we just want to carry on the Ward legacy here and move it forward.
It's more about your repeat offenders than the.
Exactly. No, it's exactly what it's all about. You know, we all make mistakes. My wife puts something wrong in the blue can every other week, and, but there's tools that we have, there's, and I'll, I'll get it all wrong, but there's websites, there's the cell phone, I'm showing my age now, apps, Waste Widget, there's a plethora of information out there, and we ask that people come visit our sites, go through the MRFs, go through the transfer stations, just so they can see kind of what happens, so, yeah, there's a ton of education that goes out there.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yes.
All right. We took a vote on that, correct?
That's what I have.
Yeah, we ordered the first one.
We're on B.
We still need, we still need a vote on the second.
Right. Yes.
All right. And then, we had a motion and a second.
So, yeah, no.
No, we didn't, okay. Thank you.
For the new one, I'll, I'll make a motion that.
Thank you.
That the request with Solid Waste of Willets to grant the existing franchise agreement with the City of Willets to Redwood Waste Solutions, Inc., with a new expiration date of December 31, 2032, with an option for a 10-year extension.
Perfect.
With the additional holidays?
Oh, yeah, with the additional holidays and changes that they're requesting.
All right, thank you. And then we had a second motion from Councilmember Stransky, and so. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
All right. Was there anybody from the public? I thought we went there, but I can go there again.
The second one, I was.
Yeah, the second one, okay. All right. And then back over to City Manager, in case we have any verbal reports.
I do not for tonight.
All right. Thanks for keeping me on my tins.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bittersweet. No. We're going to have a good time. Voting on a termination.
One item on the solid waste is the resolution that was in the packet, had an error on the date. We have a corrected version here that will be, it listed, it would go in effect on the 13th of December, which is today, but it's actually the 31st, but it's just the resolution, but the agreements are correct.
Okay, so the record will reflect that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on to department recommendations, item, item 9A is adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a restricted grant agreement with the California Department of Transportation to receive funds from Cycle 2 of the Clean California Local Grant Program.
Dusty Dooley, I'm proud to be your Community Development Director. Congratulations, Councilmember Connie, on not having to be mayor anymore, and.
Don't encourage her.
Yeah, congratulations, Mayor Rodriguez. Yeah, you've done it before, you did a great job last time, and I'm sure you'll do a good job again. You did a great job last time, and I'm sure you'll do a good job again. So, yeah, this is a resolution authorizing us to move forward with the Clean California grant that we received recently in the amount of $2.772 million. You may recall, back on April 12th, we presented a very much a similar resolution, introduced the opportunity to seek application for funds under this Clean California Grant Program. We presented a variety of projects to both beautify and clean up our city. And then a lot of those projects were identified in previous existing plans, like the Main Street Corridor Plan. And, you know, beyond that, we did a good job of sort of matching up projects that met the intent behind the funding. And to brag about the city a little bit, you know, we were, 16% of applications were funded, and we were one of them. So that was a big win for us, and now there's quite a bit of work to do. So, we had a resolution that was previously approved by council. It was also approved by Caltrans when we submitted the grant. And I guess there was a second review, and they found some flaws with it. So we are happy to bring forward an amended resolution that will allow us to move forward and enter into a grant agreement with Caltrans. And like I told them, I said, if you want to give us, you know, $2.7 million, we'll give you 25 resolutions, no problem. But anyways, that's why it's a little bit of a repetitive thing and why we need to bring back a revised resolution to your attention tonight.
Okay.
Just a quick question. What was the blaring issue, or is it just the language?
You know, I don't know that there really was one. But again, you know, there probably was an opportunity to ask some clarifying questions and possibly avoid having to come back tonight. But there were no fatal flaws, there were no inaccuracies necessarily. We just had a second individual take a look at it, and maybe they were new to, I don't know. But, but again, you know, $2.7 million, you want two resolutions, no problem.
We're keeping the money.
Yeah.
All right.
In reading this, I noticed that there's a pavilion, a 250,000 or 100 feet of pavilion in Bud Snyder Park.
Pavilion.
Pavilion. It's a building that you're going to put up in there?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I didn't quite understand what you said there, yeah.
There's probably no one in this building, other than me and Jerry, maybe, that understands that there was a pavilion in there before. And no, I won't chaperone it.
That's right.
I just want that out for everybody to know. And then the other one is the Main Street patching of pedestrian lighting. And it starts at East Valley and goes to Madden. What does that consist of?
So, we're looking to purchase and install a number of decorative streetlights. And this was something that was consistent with the recommendations that were found in the Main Street Corridor Plan. And will further enhance lighting in the downtown area, so it'll make it a little bit safer to walk around with your dog at night, for instance.
So, but that's all the farther that it goes, just from one to the other place, on both sides of the street?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, those potential lights are significantly different than the current Cobra-style lights on Main Street, which are highway grade and are focused mainly for vehicles, whereas these would be lower and more concentrated light for pedestrians and sidewalks.
Yeah, we haven't picked out a specific model necessarily, but they're going to be those more, what I'm calling decorative streetlights, that'll sit lower to the ground, not so high up. Some of them are, for instance, cast iron, and they'll allow you to hang banners or planters from them. So they're sort of the common ones that you typically see in other downtown regions.
I just wanted to stress that it's not just decorative, it's not just pretty, it's also a safety function.
It's very much a functional lighting to augment the existing lighting in downtown.
Worth noting that in the Main Street plan, there was some questions and comments from the community about, you know, how much of this is going to go back to working on a plan that was already in place? There was some concern that it's all going to Commercial Street, and it's not, and this is just, that piece is one more item to show that Main Street is still very much a priority.
Yeah, so some of it goes to Commercial Street, some of it goes to the downtown area. Some of it will go to supporting that banner that'll be hung up near the intersection of Highway 20 and Main Street to both promote special events, as well as to promote local businesses or draw people into the downtown area. A number of improvements to all our parks, Bud Snyder Park, Red Grove Park, Batcock Park, yeah. As well as support some community cleanup days, some free dump days for the community. So again, we were really looking for a plethora, pulling from a plethora of previous planning documents, looking to enhance a number of community spaces consistent with council goals. And then also, very much understanding the intention behind the funding source and matching up projects to really hit that criteria. Because again, this was a competitive grant series. You have people grading your proposal, and it's essentially a point system. And again, that was, you know, the secret to the success, I think.
I'm not going, yeah.
I appreciate you clarifying this, because the grant award notification came out at the same time as the efforts for planning for East Commercial Street. And I've been hearing a lot of confusion in the community from people who think that this $2.7 is just for East Commercial, as the mayor just attested a few minutes ago. So I hope that, I hope that our news media are listening tonight and will help spread the word that this $2.7 million is going to do a lot in various parts of the city. This is not the East Commercial project getting all of that money.
Yeah, and I think that there was grant money before that $2.7, that, for example, the shade structure over at the ball fields was part of a prior before that. So there's been a little bit of confusion in the community about what grant is funding some of the improvements. It's wonderful, we're seeing lots of improvements, but just know that there isn't just one source that is making this all happen. And we had talked about that at the, which committee was that?
Transportation.
The Transportation Committee, about doing a little bit of education piece on helping people understand which grants are paying for which community improvements. And we're just thrilled we're having more community improvements, but there's more than one out there. And thank you. Thank you to all those that are working on them and successfully getting them. And like you said, now the hard work ahead of implementation and follow-up, so. Okay.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
Are any of these lights going to be solar by any chance, or are they all?
The lights that are proposed for the downtown areas won't need to be solar. When Caltrans came through and completed the project, we have electrical conduit running into the sidewalk, so we should be able to make use of that.
Okay, thank you.
Could we, could we look into the possibility of having them, what the cost would be if they were solar and we used the existing electricity so that, you know, if there was enough power there, then it would only pull the additional from the main source? Just a thought, you know, as we're talking about going green, that's just one more step.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there's any restriction with the grant funds that we couldn't look and, you know, potentially use the money to fund.
At least look.
There may be some advantages, you know, between the two.
Lake County has those ones on plenty that are.
And it could be that there's a huge price difference, but I'd just be interested in knowing a little bit more so that we make a good educated decision on that, if we can. Okay. And then we have, does anybody want to make a motion?
Public comment?
Oh, I was going to, I'm going to make a motion on public. I'll go to public next. All right, yes, could you step up to the, like, Dusty's down there? Maybe.
My question is, so you're going to fix, are you going to fix the streetlights as well as putting up these other lights as well? Okay. And also, I did want to clarify on my public comment. It was not Dolores that told me to call in on the streetlights, it was Kathy. So I wanted to make sure to make that clear, because I misspoke the wrong person's name. And Dolores has always been nothing but kind.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so, Donna, for clarity, so what I was referring to was installing additional streetlights. But, you know, I believe staff will follow up on the issue that you noted earlier. But the grant funding wasn't intended to go and fix existing streetlights within town, rather install the new ones in the downtown area?
It was, it wasn't intended to?
The grant funding wasn't obtained to go around and fix existing streetlights, rather establish new ones. But I'm sure that staff will follow up on the issue that you noted earlier.
Counsel, if I may?
Yes, please.
The far majority of streetlights within the city are owned and operated by PG&E. We had a little breakdown in communication with PG&E. And recently, we re-engaged with PG&E on the communication who is responsible parties for whatever issues, if it's a facility, a streetlight, wiring issues within the network or the system of the circuits. So we have the correct individuals now. And when we received inquiries from the public, we know who we can reach out to on the PG&E side. So just for clarification.
So you're not telling the public to reach out to them anymore?
You can, but if someone directs an inquiry to city staff, we now have direct contact at PG&E that we can follow through and have some expectation of a response back.
Okay, because I was.
If you want to, if you want to continue, you're welcome. Do you still have time? I bet you have to be at the podium, if you don't mind, please.
Because whenever I called in, Brian, and asked about the lights on my street, because there was none for quite some time, and there's a lot of crime that goes on in Coast Hardware all throughout the night, I was told by Kathy that that is a citizen's problem. So it's your problem, that you live there, you need to call in on that, on that street for those streetlights. So I had to mark down the number and call PG&E. She gave me PG&E's phone number, which I could have just looked up myself. So, thank you.
And Donna, just something else, you weren't the only person who's complained about streetlights. So I know that staff has started reaching out to Caltrans to, not Caltrans, to PG&E to get it moving quicker, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Jerry. I did want to know if it would also, so you guys will be in charge if I call in and say, you know, that all of the streetlights on the, you know, north end of town, as soon as you hit past the gas station, they're all turned off at night, so.
So Donna, the other thing I'll tell you, wearing my old hat that I used to wear, I would tell the public, "Call us, but call yourself," because sometimes it's a lot easier when the city people call to tell the PG&E, "Hey, we've had complaints," and you might be getting some more of those from the public, so both of us hitting it.
But is that their jurisdiction, that area?
Yeah, so, well, if it's in the city limits, it's basically PG&E. And we basically get a bill from PG&E, is that correct, Brian?
Yes.
For the electricity used to, like, the only thing that happened a couple of years ago is they have eliminated some poles. And I'm not sure what the plan will be, if, when, and if they underground everything, that we may still have light poles. But they converted all the lights over to LEDs. And actually, I think they're as bright as the old ones. I don't know if you remember the old ones, that most of the time they went out, those bulbs went out a lot more than the LEDs. So it has gotten better, it's just not great.
Okay.
And so.
Yeah, city staff and city council members, in recent months, there's been some discussion about, it's come to, I know to my attention that there is an issue with some of the bulbs being out. When I heard about it, I drove around town, made note of it. The next time I met with city manager at my regular weekly meeting, he was already on it, explained to me the process of contacting PG&E and the city taking inventory of which lights are out as well. So we're aware of it and making contact with PG&E. In terms of, it seemed like maybe that there was a little confusion over what we could do with the grant money. And I just want to clarify, that grant money is very, very specific. So we couldn't just say, "We want to fix the existing ones." The grant lays out what the criteria is to receive the money, and that's why it has to be spent on new ones. It doesn't, money doesn't, those dollars don't qualify for repairing other existing lighting systems. Does that make sense?
But, yeah, but don't we already pay for the lights? We just, as, you know, our community, we already pay for those lights, so they should be lit at night.
Yeah, that's, but I guess what she wanted to point out.
Yeah, I get what you're saying. Yeah, totally.
These actually, these new lights will be probably closer to the ground and aim more for pedestrians. Streetlights are kind of light up an area.
I hope they're high enough where they can, you know, it's safety where somebody's not going to damage them, that's the.
Yeah, they are. All right, is there anyone else from the public that would like to address us on this matter?
Can I add something to her comment there about staff? When, this is Walter Colon, Services and Facilities Director. When we do get calls from the public about lighting, we will check them and make an assessment. We call PG&E with the poll number, and we'll set up a task order with them, and a work order. And we've been putting that in the system. And we are doing assessments at night, going around and checking and checking poll numbers to see if there are areas that are dark. So if you do call into the, into the city, we will follow up with it with PG&E and put it through. So, yeah.
I just, whenever I'm out there, I'm out to exercise them, I'm on a mission. That's like my priority to release, so.
Okay, yeah, we are following up on it.
Thank you. Dolores, did you have a comment?
Yeah, if anybody calls PG&E or the city regarding an outage light, please call with the poll number. It would definitely expedite it being fixed.
Oh, that's a good point. Where would one find the poll number? Is it just, is it on the lower portion, is it on the plate on the bottom?
They're in random places.
They're random?
Yeah, it depends on the poll, but there's usually a three, four-digit number on every poll.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I add something? In some of the polls, just so you're not confused, some of them have multiple numbers when you start reading them. And so the more numbers you can give, the better, because what you might think is the actual poll number may mean something totally different to them. Because a couple of years ago, we sent the officers out at night on some of these areas to take stock of what lights were out. And also, what happens too is sometimes the lights are out, and they flicker, and sometimes they, so they're kind of zombie lights, I've noticed. I think with the LED, that's gotten better. But in the past, some of them would stay on for a bit, then go off. So that would be worth noting, too, when you call in.
All right. All right, having heard from them, no additional comments from the public. I'll bring it back up here.
I would like to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the restricted grant agreement with the California Department of Transportation to receive funds from Cycle 2 of the Clean California Local Grant Program, the aforementioned resolution.
All right.
I will second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the matter, so I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Stransky? Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes, so the motion carries 4-0. And we're going to move on to, thank you. We're going to move on to the adoption of a resolution approving a professional service agreement with Land Logistics Incorporated for professional planning services. It's you again.
Yeah. So we just talked about, you know, how we obtained this Clean California grant. It was highly competitive. Approximately 16% of applicants throughout the state got funded. And Leilani Shine is our contract planner, and she was the main author and probably the person that deserves the most credit for us getting that grant. And we benefit from her services through our contract with Land Logistics. And so what we're seeking tonight is an amendment, essentially a renewal of that contract to maintain the excellent services provided by our contract planner, Leilani Shine. So we're looking to extend the contract. provided by our contract planner, Leilani Shine. So we're looking to extend the contract for essentially another year for a total budget not to exceed $170,000. And with that agreement, we'll benefit for approximately 28 and a half hours of Ms. Shine's services throughout the, throughout the year. Currently, she's also assisting, as council knows, with putting together a comprehensive sidewalk ordinance. And we'll be looking to have her also assist with some projects related to water and wastewater, which, which will allow us to make use of enterprise funds to help support some of that $170,000, as well as some, some special projects within the city manager's office and the continued support of the Community Development Department. So we're certainly looking for council's approval of a resolution, resolution authorizing us to extend that contract.
Councilmember Stransky?
The 170, is that wages?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Wages and benefits, or just wages?
Just wages.
It's a contract?
It's a contract.
Okay, just clarifying.
And just to, just to point out, in these contracts, it's not just their wages, but their time, mileage, or whatever that they're paid for by their employer. And so it's weighted that way. So while it made it look that she's making X, she's probably making a little less than that, and the rest of it's weighted to pay for, and that's how contracts work. Is that correct, Dusty?
That is correct.
Nothing from you. I just want to say that we had a discussion about this particular item at our Measure K meeting. And one other item that we talked about was that she would support also additional building construction, as there's, there are some projects in the community, and there is more time that needs to be allocated to that so that we can move forward. We all want to see more grants, but we, if we don't allow for more staff time to facilitate the grants, we, the grants will be pointless. And so that's why this particular agreement is important. And it was the consensus of our Measure K committee that this was also a good use of taxpayer funds to ensure that we could continue to be able to facilitate those, those grants, so.
I'll open it up to the public. Anybody from the public want to address us on this item? All right, it's quiet tonight. Okay, I'll bring it back up here.
I guess I will move for the adoption of the resolution approving the professional services agreement with Land Logistics for the professional planning services. And it's, just want to say, Dusty, I do like the fact that, just that you're bringing in money, but that we're giving the community projects that they can look at. I mean, more lighting is good. Anything to help pedestrian safety is good, so.
Yeah, thank you for the kind words, Jerry. And yeah, we're excited about this project too, because it, you know, it's going to be easy for, for the community to see and share in the enjoyment of. So we're, it's a, it's a, it's a big deal for our little city. We recognize that. Thank you.
I think too, it's lip service if we just say that we want to see more grants, and we tell the city staff, "Go out, get more grants to make things happen. If we don't then back it up with a funding source to ensure that we can fulfill our obligations." So I know that it hurts, but it is part of the plan in order to make things happen.
So we have a motion on the table.
Before I second, which I would like to do, I just also want to point out that Leilani, as you mentioned, helped draft the sidewalk ordinance. And that was one of the best presentations we've had in five years, I mean, being on council. It was so thorough, it gave us so much to chew on, it had a lot of meat, and I thought we should knock it out of the park. So I'm happy to see her continuing her contract with the city. And with that, I will second the recommendation motion.
Thank you. And I appreciate that you, you both have mentioned, because, you know, a large award like that and a grant being the lead on that is quite an achievement. So I think she's demonstrated her, her value.
All right, we have a motion and a second. So I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
No.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries 3 to 1. And we'll move on with item 9C. Notice of completion for West Mendocino Rehabilitation Project, Phase One, Project 2023-14 from Argonauts Constructors.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, Walter Cullen, Services and Facilities Director. Before you, the notice of completion for the West Mendocino Rehabilitation Project, Phase One, 23-14, that Argonaut Constructors finished on time, and we came in slightly under budget. So job is complete. We're looking to file a notice of completion and close that job out.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Are there any outstanding complaints from the neighboring, any of the neighbors in the community?
Nothing that we...
Is there any unfinished business?
No, no unfinished business. We will be striping out some of the stop signs. County, city staff will be doing that. But otherwise, the job was completed to satisfaction. We even got extra work done out of it through some deductive change orders, got some extra paving out of it and some things. All the things I've heard from the community have been very positive. I've been approached by many of the neighbors and are very happy the way they performed. And the disruption was minimal, you know. So we did well, I think, on it, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Any other?
I know that we haven't had torrential raining, but with what we had, any observations in the area?
We've been checking it with the city engineer, myself, and the engineer of record, Taltree, and everything's been performing as planned. We will be monitoring it all winter as, when the heaviest rains hit, and will, like I said, monitor it all winter and see that it's performing as specified. So far, everything has been perfect, yes.
I like it came in under budget too, with all the extra...
I know. That's always a good thing. So it wasn't a lot, it was a little, but we got more work, came under budget and on time. So I think all good.
We like under budget.
Yes.
All right, anything from... Nope, all right. Anybody from the public want to address us on this matter?
All right, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
We didn't make a motion.
No, we didn't.
Wait a minute, we didn't make a motion. I'm like, out of sorts, I should be over there.
That's why we're under budget. We just cut corners.
I'll move to adopt the accompanying resolution.
Thank you, Greta.
Of West Mendover Rehabilitation.
I will second.
Thank you, that's your shot.
Yeah.
I looked at my paper and I was like, all right, let's go.
Okay, all right. I'm in the wrong seat.
You're just rusty. You're in the right seat. You're good.
Yes, okay. All right. So the motion carried. And we're going to move on to item 9D, which is adoption of a resolution awarding the construction contract for the 2023 pavement preservation project, Project 2023-07, to Budelair Construction in an amount not to exceed 510,468, and authorize city manager to execute the contract and approve construction change orders up to cumulative total of 10% of the total contract amount. And I'll turn it over to Walter Cullen, our Services and Facilities Director.
So we go from one completed project to the next one. On December 7th, we had, we opened up bids. We had a range of 510,468, 714,601, from seven bidders. We had a really good spread of contractors who were interested in the project. Our engineer's estimate was 531,850, so we came in under our engineer's estimate. It's a qualified bid, and I recommend that Budelair's Construction Incorporated be awarded a bid not to exceed 510,468, with a cumulative total of 10% for construction change orders for the amount.
All right. Any questions?
Could you just briefly explain to the public what the PPP is?
The pavement preservation program, project, is addressing the worst roads in the city. They get identified every year. This is the 23, and it's affecting Lenore and Bosqueville, those two roads. It has, the roads will be repaved, taken out, repaved, and there's several ADA compliant ramps going in and bump outs to control traffic speed. And there is a portion of it that is going to be also done over on Bechtel Road.
Digouts.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Can I add something? Is it possible that we can augment a little bit on the resolution to authorize the appropriations be increased to match the amount of, that's awarded in the contract? We have 400,000 that's budgeted for the year, and this contract is at 500,000. So if we could just augment the language just slightly to allow for the appropriation to increase...
I'll ask city attorney to weigh in on that.
Can you, do you have some draft language you'd like to suggest?
Just to authorize the, the increase in appropriations to cover the cost of the contract.
To insert that sentence?
To insert that sentence in the resolution.
All right, I think that's appropriate.
So we do have the funding in place. So majority of the PPP, the pavement preservation program, are funded through state gas tax revenue that is bundled back to the city for street improvements, transportation projects. So my understanding correctly, Manny, that the 22, 23 budget does have the money set aside, but not earmarked for this specific project?
Yeah, it's earmarked at 400,000. So if we're awarding, we're awarding a contract currently now for 500,000. I didn't catch that, so.
So would it be a budget adjustment?
It's just an adjustment.
It's a budget amendment.
It'd be just a budget amendment.
The requested sentence would be inserted in the resolution. You can vote on that. You can decide if you want to make that augmentation or not. I think it's appropriate that we identify the source of the money to complete the project.
Yeah, so we can identify it from Source 202, from Funding Fund 202, Transportation Tax Fund.
Transportation Tax Fund. Can I ask a question, Walter, or mostly for the public? You know, in the past, the way pavement preservation was, I know the public wants different streets paved at different times, but the idea is that even though these streets may have been paved in the near past, they've come under disrepair, and we need to fix them before they completely get to the point they cost us more money. Is that the take that you?
The roads, there was a street assessment that was done, and the roads are all graded according to condition, usage. And so we've been going through each year and identifying the ones that are the most in need of repair, and, like I said, due to usage and their present condition.
So hypothetically, somebody living on Catherine Lane may not see their street necessarily paved in one of these projects because of the amount of traffic going on that street versus...
It depends on several factors and everything. We can only do so much each year, depending on budget. And so each year, there'll be a new assessment of which ones will qualify for the following year in terms of repairs.
Because I know that what happens is the public sometimes goes, "Wait, when is my turn?" You know?
Exactly, yeah.
I think that's, I wanted to kind of put that out there. It's the, well, I like to tell some people, "Well, it's the amount of traffic on your street, and if there's something different, then they should get ahold of you guys to basically say, 'Hey, you may not have rated this higher, but in your studies in the future, et cetera.'"
Right. And I don't know if that's something, Brian, that we could put on the public website, that we do have a traffic plan where the roads were graded, and I don't know if that's something that, so people can see where we're, how we're approaching it and how we're coming about that decision.
We can accommodate that.
There's a map that shows.
Yeah, we can put it there. Basically, MCOT does a rating. They retain a consultant that goes through and identifies and ranks our streets, the pavement index.
Yes.
We are below what MCOT expects, and we've been playing catch-up with the funding mechanism to accommodate the streets. Recently, we changed our focus on how we are applying our pavement preservation focus from, we're trying to spread out as much of the resources as possible, and we're getting away from purely looking at how we're going to accommodate the road traffic. We're trying to incorporate traffic calling measures as well as pedestrian features into it. So we're looking beyond just the road surface. We're looking at curb gutter and then sidewalk and ramps.
And ADA issues.
Yes.
To kind of get a catch of...
Yeah, trying to address them at the same time if we can.
The reason I ask that is sometimes people in the past, I remember my father would comment, "Hey, it looks like the mayor's street got paved, but not somebody else's." You know, they make flippant comments. And I think what I've tried to tell people, there's actually a science to this, that there's a study done, and it's not just arbitrarily as to who's...
No, there was an independent study done to grade and assess the roads, and we're basing it off of that and our own street assessments too, and combining to see which year, each year, which ones will qualify.
The city council has, as they're adopted, 2021, a goal for the pavement surfacing is approximately 86 percentile to reach it out of 100. We're down in the low 50s and 60s.
There's some roads that are in very bad condition, yes.
But it also, that index is slightly skewed as well, because it takes in, it did take in a portion of Main Street prior to its relinquishment, so.
And I know that we've adopted a complete streets mentality, where in the past, they threw pavement on streets, and then they had to come back six months or a year later and put in underground stuff, and then we ruined our good pavement. And so now I think you guys are putting in a little more study into it.
That's the also, the other focus change is that we're going to do as much of utilities or underground work, and we may leave streets in a patched mode, and then go back two, three years later to do the resurfacing and do it all at once as a greater cost savings with mobilization of materials and bidding purposes.
And mostly, I'm just kind of throwing this out to just educate the public, because every time we vote on one of these people, I always get a comment, "How come that street got paved again?" Or, "It was paved in my recollection, blah, blah, blah."
So maybe we can release that map that shows what it's based on. We are already working on the 24 PPP, and that's going out to bid at the end of January, beginning of February for the next year also.
And that would come back to the council. The deadline is for March.
Yeah, for March.
Mayor Rodriguez, can I address Manny's request?
Yes, please.
I think it's important that we have good clarity on how we're changing this resolution and what the staff recommendation is. Thank you.
And so what I would suggest is that this item 9D, we just add one sentence to the very end of it.
Yeah.
We, we leave it as is, but just add a one sentence to the very end of it. And I'd like you to help me with the, with the creation of this sentence. And I would suggest it be, "And approve a budget adjustment augmenting the PPP account," or how should we phrase that?
Augmenting the transportation...
Augmenting the transportation...
Or utilizing fund balance from 202.
Yeah, fund balance from Fund 202.
I'm sorry. "And approve a budget adjustment augmenting the transportation..."
Tax and maintenance fund.
Tax and maintenance fund.
And with a parentheses, Fund 202.
Fund, parentheses, 202.
To cover the cost of the contract.
And the amount of that augmentation, or do you...
It would be the total, the amount of the augmentation would be, let's see here, what's the total amount of the contract?
510,468.
So it's 110,468, by 110,000.
Okay, so what I have is a sentence added on, actually, we put a semicolon at the end of the word "amount," and then insert, "And approve a budget adjustment augmenting the transportation tax and maintenance fund, parentheses, 202, in the amount of 110,465 dollars?"
68.
68 dollars. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, just to be clear, 400 is coming from SB1, and 110 is the city's portion coming from 202, the gas tax?
I would defer to...
No, no, that's, it would be coming from our MRA and all the, and the gas, and the transportation tax fund. So Fund 202 is where the current pavement preservation project is assigned.
Okay, so that SB1 money is in 202?
Yes, yeah. It transfers over from a secondary account, Fund 201, and goes into Fund 202.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? No? All right, I'll open it up to the public. If you could step up to the podium, please.
Good evening, Ragdezacaria 266 School Street. I'm just trying to understand, we have a contract we signed for... contract we signed for 500,010 and plus, and now we're finding out that we don't have the funds. So why don't we go back to that contractor and say, "Can you do it for 400,000 and something?" Why are we taking money from something reserved for improvement to renegotiate a contract? Maybe we can put it out for another bid for somebody to do it for the amount we can afford. I'm just curious. I mean, how did we, I mean, did we put the bid, and he came back and said, "This is how much it's going to cost me to do that project," and we just signed off on it?
No, and I'll let Manny go ahead and clarify.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm just curious.
Okay, so what's going on is that it's the appropriations that is at issue. So whenever we do our budgetary items, we have certain amounts of line items that are appropriated to be able to spend. We have the funding available. It's just that the appropriations, we have to do a formal approval to be able to increase our budget so that we can allow for that. We do have fund balance in the account, in the amount that to cover.
We can go back to the contractor and say, "Can you do it for less?"
There's no reason to do that. It would be inappropriate. We put it out to bid, they came, they came.
So you just want to balance the budget?
Yeah.
Is that, that's just shifting numbers from one to another?
Yes. It's more like increasing our ability to be able to spend the dollars. Right now, we have it as fund balance, and it's lining away to be able to be expended in future events. But this way, we're able to do a project that we want to have done, and so we're just increasing our appropriations to cover that cost.
When the project was scoped internally, we had the budget, but it was on different line items.
Good.
What we're doing here is publicly taking money from one line item to the correct line item where we can draw from.
Okay.
Because this type of project is very specific on the grant, or, excuse me, the funding sources, because we're using, utilizing state money that was allocated to us through the tax, gas tax allocations.
I was just curious how we're moving the funds.
I see it as just being honestly very transparent about how we're doing our, how we're doing our accounting practices, more than, yeah, more than anything else.
Okay, we have the fund at least. Okay, thank you.
Good question, so. Thank you. Anybody else from the public? All right, having heard none, I'll bring it back up here to the, to the dais. Does anybody have any follow-up questions, or? No? Anybody want to make a motion?
Sure. I will move to, award a contract to Budleer's Construction in the amount not to exceed 510,468 with the special notice, special language added to the resolution.
Which way?
And for clarification, that language again is adding the sentence, "And approve a budget adjustment augmenting the transportation tax and maintenance fund, parentheses, 202, and parentheses, in the amount of 110,468 dollars."
Yes.
And you also included, intended to include in your motion the 10% construction change order amount.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Connie.
I will second.
All right, we have a second on that motion with the amendment. And now I will call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries for zero.
Just a little item to throw in there. Budleer is a local contractor, so those funds, once we have correctly allocated, are going to be staying in this community.
All right. Moving on to item 9E, discussion and possible approval of employment agreement with the executive recruitment firm, Peckman and McKinney, for recruitment of the city's police chief. And our presenting staff member will be Karen Stevenson, our human resources manager.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. The police chief is a position that is, needs to be seasoned, needs to have experience, and obviously, we had a revolving door for a while. And the ability to recruit, hire, and train police officers is a challenge not only throughout the state, but through the nation. And we are no different. We have eight vacancies in the police department. We have a need for three officers, two sergeants, a community service officer, and two dispatcher vacancies. And we really need a recruit, recruiting firm that understands small cities, rural cities. We don't have, you know, unlimited amount of funds. We typically go with Bob Maron Associates. They were not available. They're doing some changes in their firm. So Peckham and McKinney came highly recommended. They've just completed recently the hiring of the police chief for Fort Bragg, Marin, Los Banos. They also had the fire chief for Scotts Valley, which is near Santa Cruz. Their recruiting team is all made up of retired city managers, assistant city managers, police chief, fire chiefs, and department heads. They, the person that will be doing our recruitment has 25 years' experience with public service. She was actually the police chief for the city of Fremont, and she will focus, normally, recruiting teams have, you know, about six or more going on at the same time. She's going to focus on just us. She understands our particular needs. The recruitment process takes between 12 to 14 weeks. That's important for a couple of reasons. One is because once we select a qualified candidate, they still need to go through a thorough background, which could take between three to four months. So we're looking at this process, before we get our next police chief, to be between six to seven and a half months. In order to survive, we really need some, another interim. Matter of fact, we're going to need two more. We were unsuccessful in securing Chief Connor to be our next police chief. Financially, it just didn't work out, but we, he does have some good ideas about our next interims. With a CalPERS retired employee, you may know that they can only work 960 hours. That's about six months. And his term will come to completion early February. So we're going to need to come back and get a contract for another interim police chief who could only stay for six months, and then we'll still probably have to get another one right after that, so that we can make sure that we have a qualified candidate. We're, like I said, they came very highly recommended. $28,000 seems like a lot, but it was, it's actually less than some of the other firms that I looked into. And we believe that they are the right firm for the city.
So Chief Connor, would it, I hate the idea of having an interim and then the possibility of another interim. If we're in another calendar or fiscal year, is there any possibility out there that you would be able to come back again for another short period?
So the 960 hours is per?
Per fiscal year.
Is per fiscal year. The 960-hour rule for retired and new tenants is by fiscal year, and it's the July 1 to June 30 fiscal year, which means that my ability to work 960 hours will reset starting July 1. If you need me, I will be back for another 960 hours.
You would be my personal hope that you would be able to come back. I know that the community.
I promise you that I will come back.
No, the community there has had the opportunity to chat with you, has had positive things to say about you. The, the, the police officers and the dispatch that I've spoken to, I've spoken highly of you in the time that you've been here. Yeah.
I was, I'm personally disappointed that, that we weren't able to get an exception to the 960-hour rule. That was, because of legislation, that's, that's, it's just the law. And the governor was able to, through an emergency order due to COVID, that they suspended that law, so cities were able to get exceptions to the 960-hour rule. But sometime last year, they lifted the emergency order, and so it went back to just the legislation, which is 960. So I was, I was disappointed in that, because as I, as I told our city manager when I came here, "I'm here for as long as you need me." But they're kind of kicking me out the door. But if it gets to July and, and you need another interim, I promise you that I will come back and be happy to do that.
All right, we're going to hold you to that. Okay, as it pertains to the recruitment contract, do we have that, does anybody up here, any council members have any questions? Now I'll open it up to the public. Does anybody from the public have questions? Yeah, please, just, each time I ask that you step at the dais so that the people that are watching from home have the opportunity to hear you.
With this recruitment, does that give the possibility of any previous officers that have been let go to be able to come back?
So this, this is strictly related to the recruitment of a police chief?
Oh, okay.
And it doesn't have anything to do with any other positions in law enforcement?
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong?
No, that's right.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. All right. Well, having heard comments from the public, does anybody up here want to make a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the accompanying resolution approving the employment agreement with Peckham and McKinney for the executive recruitment of the city's next police chief, and we will very much miss Chief Connor.
He hasn't gone yet.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, so now I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries for zero, so we'll look forward to that. And with that, we'll go to, so normally, we have the department monthly reports presented at the second meeting of the month. There won't be a second meeting of the month because of the holiday. Are there any departments that would like to, to give anything out of, any reports out of the ordinary this month? That's okay, too. All right, just thought I'd open it up.
I have one thing.
Yes.
We do have some work that's unexpected that's going on in the baseball fields. The baseball organizations within the city here have organized to provide free service to rehabilitate one of the baseball fields. So they're, they've set up a whole volunteer program and materials, and they're going to be rehabilitating the softball field and baseball field in the, behind the rodeo grounds and getting that back into condition. The city's going to have limited funding for that and everything, and they're providing all the labor and all the materials for that project.
So is this the old Laughlin Field that was on the south side of Commercial Street that's currently being used for the carnival?
Yes, correct. It's being rehabilitated, yes.
No, no.
Is that the wrong, oh, is it the wrong?
The one behind it.
Oh, the one behind it, yeah.
Yes.
So, okay, so, so it's across the street, it is on the south side.
It is on the south side, correct.
It's the southernmost field.
Yes.
There are two existing, there are two existing baseball fields.
Yes.
And it's the one that's furthest to the south.
Furthest back, yes, correct.
And in that, within that project, are they rehabilitating the snack shack that's back there between the two as well, do you know?
They're going to be looking at that, yes, repainting it and doing, working on the bleachers too, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It'll be actually up and running for the upcoming season. They'll have it all completed, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't that area used as overflow, overflow parking this past summer during Frontier Days?
I did see, I did see cars back there.
So my concern is if there has been an establishment of the use of that area for parking, and then we have volunteer groups that are putting money and time into restoring the fields, does the city have some way to make sure that that area isn't used for parking and isn't damaged during the summertime activities when?
The problem was, it was getting damaged through parking and wasn't being able to be used for any other use. And I don't believe, from what I heard from the staff, that wasn't, it was overflow, but I don't know if it was part of their operating, for the rodeo. I think it was just added into there. It was unofficial, and they were not really supposed to be using that parking, and it was getting abused. They had a lot of issues with damage to the field.
That is, that is the correct assessment of what happened this past year.
Yeah.
So we will police it, and once we monitor what the actual results of the, of the restoration work, we will do the best to, you know, keep it intact.
That's a really good question, because that field has been deteriorating, and I was wondering who unlocked the gate and why there were cars back there on the field during the frontier.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And they also were passering animals out there, too.
Yeah.
I just, I just really want to make sure that, you know, we have volunteer organizations who are putting effort into the city-owned property that belongs to the community, that it's respected and made sure that it's available for the community members who are investing their time and money into it.
And I think that rehabilitating it is going to show that it's being used and maintained and kept up its present condition. I think, you know, a lot of the problems came about because it didn't look like it was being maintained. And so I think once it's rehabilitated as an active baseball field, that's going to change, yes.
Yeah. And soccer was using that up until two years ago, when it became too much of a hazard to.
And they're going to be, there's a.
We were using it, but it was, we had several twisted ankles and whatnot.
Yeah. That, they will be fixing it up enough that soccer could be able to use it and stuff. The way they're setting the lines, there'll still be room for soccer there, so.
At least as an overflow field.
Overflow, yeah.
Yeah, wonderful. Okay, thank you for that update. Dusty?
Just one, one correction to the community development department report and a couple highlights here. So we noted that we were successful in obtaining another grant from the State Coastal Conservancy to help support construction of the Willets Railwood Trail project. So definitely thank you to the State Coastal Conservancy for voting unanimously to support that project last week. And the correction is that in the, in the department report, it notes that we received 3.3 million, but in fact, the grant award was for over 3.8 million dollars. And so now we have, between this grant and the previous Caltrans grant that we secured, now appears that we have funding to support the estimated cost to build that trail, and we are on track to begin construction, hopefully as soon as next spring. So very, very grateful that we were able to obtain that funding. And then also wanted to shine the light on another one of our all-stars within the community development department, our city building official, Davey Bowles. I'm not going to read them all here, but he received one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven professional certifications related to his job function, and so wanted to congratulate him on that, on, on the fruits of his hard effort there. And, and those become important, because we didn't need those to know that he's good at his job, but certainly, they can come into play when, when his authorities called into question there. So very grateful that he took the time and exceeded in obtaining that further education.
Thank you. Congrats to, to, anything further from the police department, Chief Connor?
Nothing further.
Okay. And finance?
Nothing further.
No? HR, anything there? Airport? Nope. All right. And I think that covers it. We'll move on to city council announcements, communications, and reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Connie.
I've been busy. Since the last council meeting, I attended finance committee meeting, transportation committee meeting, and meant to go to the MCOT meeting, but ended up in jury duty, thought they were going to release us, and ended up sticking around in court until 4:45 in the. until 4:45 in the afternoon. But I got busy, so. Finance Committee was just this last week. Is that right? I'm losing track of time from this effort.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Measure K?
And Measure K. And we heard the good news from Nanny that the 2021 audit was completely finalized. The city did abduct in the black just a little bit. So that brought into question at the Measure K Committee how we would utilize monies that previously had been thought needed to backfill for shortage for 2021. So not needing that for 2021 means that there's more room for 21, 22 when we get the final audit on that to know how to flush out that budget. We also, at Measure K, heard the item that Dusty brought forward earlier regarding funding to continue the contract with Leibani Shine. And it was determined by the Measure K Committee that that was in line with what the voters were expecting from Measure K, which was improvement of parks and facilities, as well as stabilizing the police department and continuing current staff levels. So being able to finance that position was going to allow us to meet that commitment to the public. Let's see, what else? Transportation Committee meeting was one of the best we've had in quite a while. And we heard about not only the continuation of the sidewalk ordinance and how it's shaping up. We heard a little bit more about PPP. And something else that is now eluding me. We did have members of the public who attended, which is unusual in subcommittees. We had a couple of people show up, which was fantastic. It makes us feel like we're not just in the vacuum, we're hearing from the community. And it was brought to the community's attention, the committee's attention, that traffic safety is a real concern, speeding in our neighborhoods. And I was happy to see the police department make a social media blast regarding the upcoming campaign to focus on traffic safety and enforcement and the announcement that all of our officers are now current in their radar and lidar training, which is fantastic. So that, I think, is going to be a welcomed thing. I was pleased to note that there were many comments from the public on the police department's Facebook post, really acknowledging their concerns about safety and speeding. And it reinforced the chief's idea that public safety is one of the key things that our police department offers for our community. And his commitment to making sure that all users of the road, not just drivers, are safe, I think, was a fantastic thing. So that's my report.
All right. Councilmember Stransky?
Carrie, did we have anything about wastewater and water?
I think I recorded on it the last meeting.
Yeah. Yes, we did last time. Thank you.
We're probably due for one next week, I guess. That's what I'm hearing.
We're on the 21st?
Yeah.
Ideally, we would like to convene. There is a new topic we want to introduce to the committee.
All right. Anything further?
Nope.
All right. Vice Mayor?
I had a latte, and it was kind of a wrap-up of the year end there and discussing our, I think, projects for the next year. It's basically a, we had a presentation from, how do I say? The Mendocino County Inland Water and Power, I want to say Commission, I think? I think is what they're called. They're forming a new group, a JPA, with folks from, representing Potter Valley. And I think Lake County Sonoma will be involved. There's obviously two, PG&E wants to abandon the Scott Valley Dam in Lake Pillsbury. And again, I believe the tribe is dependent on some of that water. Lake County is also concerned about it overseas, Sonoma County. So they have not had a mechanism to advocate for this. So they're forming a JPA that then could then try and, if not fight it, at least take over the operation from PG&E. I would have brought something here, but it was due before our meeting today, so, or asked them to come and present. But they'll be looking for public support to keep that up because in essence, they're going to dry up the lake. And I think the issues brought forward are loss of property value, loss of water. I think lately, I don't think they're generating power anymore from the dam. But it has been used for water, holding water and diverting it down to Lake Mendocino eventually. So I think the idea is that it's an important source of water. It doesn't affect us per se, but I think it's important for our neighbors to the south and so the whole Yukaya Valley. So that, it was kind of a nice presentation. I hadn't really heard what the state of things were, but that, sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. But that is what we talked about then, so.
All right. Sounds informative. Thank you. And then for myself, I served with Greta on the Finance and Transportation Committee and the Measure K, and she covered it very well. I just want to add that when we're meeting with constituents outside of just coming to council meetings, we're listening. We're bringing these ideas, these concerns to our committee meetings, sharing them with our council, fellow council member. And then when we're meeting with our city manager, following up on them. Like today, I was very happy. I was headed over to City Hall and ran into Walter in Facilities. And we had talked about a concern that community member had, and he was right on it. And I very much appreciate that. It's one of the blessings of living in a small town is that when you bring something to our attention, generally, we can get things going moving very quickly. Not always, because we're not always in control, like for example, the lights. We can keep pasturing PG&E on the lights, but, and I'm sure we will. Yeah, go ahead.
I did receive an email from John Button, who's the district director of the, our local California Conservation Corps, CCC. And he's inviting the council to a tour of the new CCC facility over by the hospital. And that will be on January 3 at 10:00 a.m. And he wanted to know if I or any other council members would attend. I'm assuming he reached out to me as mayor, so I'm giving it to you now. And I don't know if there's a limit on how many of us can attend if it's a tour. I think it would be great if we all attended.
I don't think a majority can go. I'm not sure what exception might apply.
You can advertise it as a meeting where no action would be taken.
Well, then the public has to be able to be prepared as well. So let me see if I can find an exception to that that would allow-
Because I think we would all like to go.
It's like a social thing, wouldn't it?
I see you, Dolores. One sec.
I'll get back to you tomorrow on that.
Dolores, you have a comment?
You have a comment?
Yeah. We just talked about something like this here at the conference. As long as council is not discussing city business, they can attend public events as a group as long as they're not talking about city business.
That was my understanding.
Yeah, like you attend a funeral or you attend something, as long as they're not asking us to comment or they're just showing their dog a party shot, I'm assuming that-
Okay.
Sounds good. Let me confirm. I'll get back to you tomorrow on that.
All right.
So I'll email him just to let him know that we're finding out how many can attend, but that certainly at least two of us would like to go.
Yeah. Sounds like the whole council is-
Yeah, I'd like to go, but at least two of us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. And if we can't make it all happen on January 3, then I'm sure that we can probably work out something for a secondary tour, so. As part of my reports, I just wanted to add that I had met with MTA. We had our holiday dinner. And I have to say, they are a fabulous group of employees that work at Mendocino Transit Authority, from the drivers to the maintenance, to the finance department, their management team. They're just a really good group of people. There's 55 people working over there. And I've really enjoyed serving on the MTA board the last seven years. And so, good group of people. Let's see. Any Goodwill for?
I have something. Dolores invited us to go to the Eagle Scout ceremony. I went there to the Methodist Church on Sunday, and it was really nice, especially with Dolores's husband. He's a scout master for Troop 42. And they talked about their projects. One kid apparently had COVID, so he attended through Zoom, I believe. And it was kind of a nice presentation to see our local folks. I guess there was a visiting gentleman who, I think his mother lives here, but they also, because of COVID, he wasn't able to get his award. So they kind of used it as a stand-in ceremony for him. But it was just kind of nice to look at that we have had, I believe, Dolores, you correct me, four or three Eagle Scouts of our own, and the other one was the stand-in? We've had four of our own. Okay. And so we've had four Eagle Scouts here. So I think it's really neat that the kids are this community. And also, I just kind of want to, I guess the Christmas trees are up. And so our local, is it FFA, right, that put those up? So they look pretty cool. I mean, they're Christmas trees, but the fact that the kids are involved, I think, is really great, so.
And I'd like to give a shout out to just all of the festivities that have been going on the last two weeks in Willets. We had the Roots and Mode of Power having their event. And then this last weekend, I think somebody on social media stated it best that Willets looked like a moment from a Hallmark movie. If you were out and about on Saturday night, it was wonderful. The FFA had their smaller Christmas trees. They had popcorn and fire pits and just all kinds of wonderful stuff happening over there. The Cavalry Church put in the larger tree. Jennifer Drew and other organizers organized the truckers parade. There were events happening at the Evergreen Shopping Center. There was the arts fair happening here at the community center. There was one happening across the street at my business. And we had the Grinch event out, going on. There was just a lot happening in Willets. And visitors were just really, really pleased to see what Willets had to offer. And there was a really strong sense that the community was coming together. And I think what I really enjoyed about it is that it wasn't one person that organized or pulled it off, and it wasn't even one group. It was many, many people stepping up, coming up. There is Christmas lighting, lighting up the neighborhood. There's only a few entries this year, but I know there's hope to see that grow. And there just seems to be more of a community spirit where, you know, don't wait for someone else to take the lead, jump in and make it happen. You know, too often, we hear, we want this, we need this. Who's going to make that happen? Well, it comes back to each of us, making the world just a little bit better, a little sweeter. So thank you to all those who stepped up.
Mayor, I just consulted the League of California Cities Municipal Law Handbook, and Dolores gave some spot-on advice a moment ago. And what it, the issue is, the issue is whether or not your attendance of a majority at the CCC would be considered a covered meeting under the Brown Act. And this is what it provides. A meeting means any congregation of a majority of the members of a legislative body at the same time and location to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body or local agency to which it pertains. If a majority of the members of a city council collectively toured water facilities that provide water to the city, they are having a meeting that must satisfy the requirements of the Brown Act because they're gathering the information that pertains to the city's business. But if your meeting is simply to tour a facility that has nothing to do with services being provided to the city, you are not meaning to discuss or deliberate or take action on city business. And so as long as you don't discuss city business at the CCC, as Dolores said a moment ago, I think that would be an appropriate meeting for you to attend.
All right. So we'll expect that we will all be there on January 3 at 10:00 a.m., correct?
Yes.
And is there a specific spot? Did it state that we should meet up at? Or just look for the group of people?
The tour will be on January 3 at 10:00 a.m. JP Patton, California Conservation Corps Director, will be attending along with Dan Millsap, Capitol Outlay Director and oversees new construction. Let us know if you will be attending. I'll reach out, and then if there are further instructions, I'll forward them to Dolores, who can then-
Will you RSVP for the entire group?
I will.
All right. We have no closed session this evening. And so at 8:15 p.m. this evening, we are going to adjourn and wish you all a Merry Christmas. We'll see you next year.